Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here tonight. I wish we were here under different circumstances, but I'm glad we have this opportunity to come together and have a discussion and let us hear from you. And just I hope today is to have a discussion about either what we've done, maybe what the situation looks like now, and then what we plan to do. And you all are here to help us do that because we need information so we know what happened during Hurricane Sally. And then that also gives us, helps us make the best case to try to receive some federal dollars to fix it. And that's what we ultimately want to do. I'm Commissioner Bender. And again, I appreciate you all being here tonight. We do have, we are streaming on Facebook, and I want to thank our Community Media Relations for getting all that set up. As you all were coming in tonight, my aide Angela Crowley was helping check in. I know a lot of you have talked to her, or either met with her, or talked to her on the phone, emailed us. And so I appreciate all the work she's done. On my right, we have a lot of our county engineering staff and other various departments. We have Joy Jones, our engineer, Rob McCracken, who works under her and is working with design, TJ Williams. We have an engineer that we have on retainer, Jason Lashley with Cigna, and James Duncan. We also have Wes Moreno, who is our Public Works Director, and Tim Tolbert, who is our Building Services Director. Also, we have Janice Gilli, who is the County Administrator. So first, I need to apologize. This had not gotten up to me that there was this problem from 2014. And so after some calls from Coiden and Lyric came in after the storm, walking, I think it's baywalk over there behind the Ellison Industrial, as we were out, we did the neighborhood cleanups in the weeks after the storm, and talking with citizens, did I learn about it? So we did not have, it wasn't listed on our engineering sheet of projects that we have in the works. And so I know that may sound frustrating, but we're here to change that. And that's why we have everybody here. We have some poster boards up here that we can do pushpins to get damage reports. And again, just to share some information about either what we have right now, what happened, and what we're planning on doing. I did walk the creek. I know for, you know, this is all part of a bigger project, and I want to talk about that because a lot of attention's been focused on Olive Road and the drainage that has been put in along with the widening west of here. And for the most part, it has worked. Those homes, we aren't seeing the flooding like we saw before with them. Part of that project was the expansion of the Johnson retention pond. And for the most part, it seemed like that worked, that it didn't overflow from what we can tell. The debris line was a little below the lip of it. But then we need to look further upstream where that ditch from, that runs along Pompeo that empties into the Ridgefield drain, and look at what happened and how we can fix it. So we have the retention pond that's on the north side of Johnson. It does have a pump that's activated based on the water level. And I think there is a generator attached to that, and so it should have continued to work. It's actually two pipes that come out of that. One goes into the Ridgefield bed, and another one takes it over to Ellison Industrial where we have our pit. I know I've been over there, too. I know that overflowed. And so we are looking at trying to expand what we have there. The 30 inches that we received from Hurricane Sally is somewhat unprecedented, but unfortunately, we keep saying that, that we keep having these 14, 24, 30-inch rain events. And although the drainage is, the lake at Johnson is designed for a 50-year event, I think the drainage along the Ridgefield is about a 25-year event, so we want to look at increasing that. But we're not going to be able to address everything that's going to contain the 30 inches of water every time. With that said, though, some of the projects that I was involved with and saw what the city did between 2012 and 2014, and other entities, sometimes small projects can have a big impact. And I say that in that in some of the areas where we did make improvements between 2012 and 2014, even though we received about 10 more inches of rain, the damage was less. Again, that's not necessarily to help you all, but just to say that sometimes small changes can have a meaningful impact. So I know we want to probably talk about repairs to the current area, and then what we look like going forward. I walked the ditch again today. We've been in, Public Works was in there and has cleaned it out. As any of you that did walk it before know that we did have a lot of debris as a result of the storm. And so I appreciate everyone who called into the office and let us know. We had fences, 55-gallon drums, and I know there was a tree that was stuck in one of the culverts. So we can get those removed, and that, of course, helps the flow. It did sustain some damage somewhat across from the apartments. Right before you get to the Johnson ditch, there was the washout of the road, which is in the process of being repaired. I think we said about two weeks to get that underway. There's also some damage to the drainage ditch in that area. I'm going to guess that's going to take a little bit longer, but we want to get that road repaired. And then further up, just along the sides, we have some trees that are just adjacent to the drainage ditch that we want to remove. But as we move forward, I want to say this is going to take a group effort. We have, as we know, we have the about 20-foot-wide ditch that feeds into about a seven-foot-wide ditch. I can't tell you why it was designed like that. I think we have some theories of running into some private property and easements and things like that. We do have a wider easement than what we have there. And so that gives us the opportunity with your cooperation to come in and expand that. And that may, and if we don't have the easement, then we need to work with you on getting that. You know, I know that there's been some encroachment with either fences, and so again, that's something we're going to have to work with each one of you along that, to work with you and relocate the fence so that we can come in and make some changes. And I want to let some of the engineers and things talk about that, but really, this is, I said, this was twofold, to hear from you, the damage that you sustained. And we have some boards up here, and we'll get some pushpins that you can indicate the damage so that we can paint the picture to FEMA. We do have some of that information from 2014. But again, to show the repetitiveness, and I think a lot of people say, okay, what happened after 2014? 2014, we came back and just replaced what had been there. It was, by our records, the first time that it had flooded. And so for that, it was a replace of what we had. Now we're into the repetitive process, and that's going to look, and now we're going to look at what enhancements we can make to that. And so if I would, if Joy, if you want to come up and say a few words about what that may look like in a timeline. Part of what we have, part of what we will do is make a grant request to FEMA. We're also working with the National Resource, NRCA?
National Resource Conservation Service.
And then in the recent weeks since Hurricane Sally, I've also met with some people from the American Flood Coalition that want to come in and help. And where they help is trying to get matching dollars for projects such as what we may do along this drainage basin. And so they help us at the state and federal level in securing those dollars. And so I was glad that they, A, wanted to come here and help, and that we've already started a good discussion, and part of this area was what we focused on when they came in a few weeks ago. So, and so Joy, if you wouldn't mind just coming up and again, maybe talking a little bit about what we have and what we think we can do moving forward.
I just want to let everybody know that we have walked the ditch. Our staff has been out there. We've also walked the ditch with an agency, the NRCS Agency. They are the first agency that we need to work with to... Okay, is that better? So that is the agency we need to meet with first to see if they can help us with the damage repairs. Our staff over here, and we have hired an engineer like the Commissioner talked about. So he is, he is out there. He has been out there walking in as well. And I'll ask Rob to come up and the engineer to come up to tell you exactly what they found. We do see areas where there's a pinch point, where the ditch is wider, and then it comes closer together. And we did find nine places where there was fence encroachments today. That was one of the things we saw. So we are working on it, and we do have an engineer. And like I said, NRCS is going to work with us. So far, they're talking about helping us to improve the ditch and the width of the ditch. So that is something that we can work on. I want to call Rob up next and let him tell you exactly what he saw and what we can do.
Thank you, Joy. Thank you, Commissioner Bender. Thank you to everybody that has come out tonight, especially the people that have received damage from this storm. These catastrophic events, they are exactly that. What you're going to hear me say is very similar to what you've already heard, and that's going to be, we are going to work towards trying to make things better. That's the bottom line. We're going to find the areas, I know you've heard pinch point a couple of times. We're going to locate these areas where there's, where there's trees in the way. Where are there places where we can widen this ditch out? What kind of volume can we get out of what's already out there? We know it was designed from the previous plats that we've pulled. It was designed for a 25-year conveyance. How can we get, how can we do better than that? So that's what we're going to look towards. So we'll do a, we'll do a hydraulic study, try to find out where improvements can be made, what kind of volume can we take from upstream through the conveyance as well as downstream? We need to correct as much of the problem as possible. So when we go to the NRCS, yes, sir?
Yes. When that ditch was put in, hopefully, the Ellison Pond today. So it was designed for 25 years without the overflow from the Ellison Pond. Is that kind of what I'm hearing here? Oh, excuse me. So it was designed for 25 years without the Ellison Pond?
Great. Well, I don't know, I don't know that for sure, except for I do know that the plats that we've pulled, those particular easements specifically say 25-year conveyance. When that Ellison Pond was put in, seems like it's been there for a good little while, but we do know that there is a pump there. The pump sets the level of the pond. One of the things from upstream we're looking into, which I think we could do pretty easily, is try to get that pond pumped down as much as possible. So if we can create more capacity there upstream to try to mitigate from the get-go. There's a lot of water that comes there, some dredging. There are several items that we're looking at right now, and what can we do right now versus what can we do moving forward?
Roger, understand. I mean, I'll just, real quick, at 6:30 in the morning, that ditch had nine inches of water in it. I walked out there because, of course, I flooded in '14, so I was concerned. It had nine inches of water, and it was running fine. That ditch was moving right along. That was at approximately 6:30. I wish I would have actually logged the time down, but the sun was up. The water started coming in the house at 7:51. I only, huh? 7:11? No, I was, okay, 7:11. Whatever. The water started coming in within, let's say, an hour, just for the sake of argument.
Right.
So that means that water had to come up like four foot in an hour. That thing is running fine. I believe it's built, now this is me, I'm not an engineer for this, but I believe your 25 year is probably true, but in 1980, when that, when Ellison Field wasn't, that pond wasn't there. And then the county dumps all that water on us, and that's essentially what's happened. So we're taking all this water. I noticed on your map, and it doesn't matter, I'm not trying to mitigate anybody's damage, because it doesn't really matter if it's 10 inches or if it's 20 inches in your house, or if it's five inches in your house. The damage is done. My house is on that map as a major. My house was on that map last time. Well, they didn't do a map, but it was classified a major last time by FEMA also. So it's two times in a row, I'm a major. It's two times in a row. If that ditch is 25 years, great, but six is a lot shorter than 25.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Before I forget, there are flooding questionnaires. Hot mic. There are flooding questionnaires in the back, right as you come in. I'd like everyone that has taken any kind of flooding, this form can be filled out online on the MySCambia website. But if you'll fill one out today, you can email that in, or you can go to the website. It'll go straight to engineering. And we'll make sure that these items, like you talk about, are on the map, which we've got, we've got maps that have dots from past flooding, mostly 2014. That's where you come in with a lot of the GIS information. That stuff has come a long way. We've got a few more dots on there that weren't there before for Hurricane Sally. So these questions, yes, sir, these questions, this was, I'll say this, was expected. What can be done now? Now, with NRCS, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, they also are seeing this because they came out. They saw this in 2014. So they don't want to come out and continue to fix this. So we are going to make sure that we give them all of the damage now. What do we think is going to help in the future? We need to make sure that we capture everything that we can as far as mitigation goes to make sure that we make this more so of a conveyance. That's where the hydraulic study's going to come in. It's going to take into account that pond. It's going to take into account what all is going to this pond. How much, is it a 100-year pond right now? We'll know that. Can it be, can it be expanded? Can it be dredged? We're going to be asking these questions. We'll be using in-house services. We'll be using the engineer we have on retainer right now. We have all walked this. We've seen damage from 2014, similar to what we've got now. These are, again, catastrophic events. When you get 25, 30 inches of rain, there are no designs. There are no typical designs that allow for that because there's not money typically for that. So you design for what you think you're going to get, which is your typical rainfall events, your typical rainfall intensities, as well as your amounts, your total amounts, your You got a question?
My name is Aaron Stone. I just moved into my home at 4615 Citadel, which is downstream of all this ditch that you guys are working on. We have a draw creek behind our home.
Not sure if that one's...
It's heavily wooded, and that creek is completely obscured and obstructed by fallen trees and debris. Now, I've got a lot of video on it from the recent activity a couple of weeks ago. Water came over in two inches coming to my home. Unfortunately, I was in, 2012, I was in the flooding in Santa Rosa County, had flooding water in my house. 2014, exactly two years later, took the same week, more flooding water in my house. I've been to these kind of meetings. It will be fixed eventually. In my neighborhood, I live on a ditch just like this size right here and this long that was full of grass. When they came in and put concrete, had to cost $750,000 to put a ditch that long behind my home and mitigate that water and take it into the canal. And it took a year or so, so neighbors will eventually get fixed. In our situation on Citadel, I don't, you know, I don't hear you talking about the creek. We need a hundred guys to put their chainsaws and clear that creek because the mitigation that you're talking about is coming right into our creek, right on our home. There's two branches in this creek. One is six feet wide and four feet deep that runs all the time. The other has got some other branches and tributaries that run closer to the homes. We've got like overflow. They've got foot wide and two inches deep. And, you know, like I said, I can have to show you video of what recently happened, but we don't know what's going to happen in the creek. It's going to get cleared, it can get cleared. When we get a project like that, that's what, backing that water up is going to be a lot of pressure on your system. Thank you, everyone.
Sure, thank you. So I think, I think we're talking two different systems here. I think the area north of here with the graveyard, I mean, with the Ridgeway ditch with the Ellison is one, and then the Citadel in North Point is another. So, and I've gotten a number of comments about Citadel, so that's, I appreciate you all coming. And so I know there's the natural spring that's there, and we have looked into some projects in that area. It would probably take property acquisition at one of those lots to do that. And then I think there has been some erosion on the east side of Citadel, those back neighbors that back up against graveyard branch. And so we are looking at a project there as well for funding, and I think we have to reinforce, I think that's right, Joy, we have to reinforce some of the, do some retaining walls and things like that along that graveyard branch. As far as going in and clearing out the creek, I know James Curry always talks to me, he's back there in the Bay Woods, he's further down, more closer to the GE branch about its flow. And so I would have, Wes, are we able to go in and clear out?
We can work with our county officials. I was giving it to them.
Okay. So we will, we will get that on the schedule for them to go in, and again, we have to be mindful of the environment and what the DEP, EPA allows us to do, but we will get that, get in there and do what we can. Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
My name's Dale Silver. I live at 4626 Goodale Drive. There's a longstanding problem in that area that we're addressing. From the west side, that hill drains tremendous amount of water, plus that spring that you're talking about. The lot that's in front of that spring is owned residential. There's a, the person that bought it did a brand of landscape business or something. He likes it there, it's nice wet soil, and he grows a lot of things there, and it gave him out. But that lot is constantly running all the time, kind of dry clean. But let me tell you this, that zone's made, it's owned residential, and there was no Florida land that started making use of that lot for something else. So there's other problems over there that aren't just water. But I live a little farther down from Fort Colton, on the west side of Citadel. When we get rain, I can literally bang my house. It doesn't rain, I have to come back. And if I don't rent some mosquito haven back there, and I empty my house in this housing and it's all related to that hillside spring. The retention pond on Citadel, the next time we get a good rain, maybe from the storm, come with the retention pond. It is dry.
It is dry, sir.
When that lot was taken over, previously to that, we had a problem there. A guy bought up two lots to go to the house. He trashed the lot out and tore up the field or anything in that field. The county after 2008 or something, and I think it was two years, we had to take the people that bought it, of course, because they were doing this problem. The county put the drains in that lot. Then this guy bought it, this landscaper guy over there, and he tore those drains out because of why it's hard to work towards the land. So that's added the problem over here. Why don't the retention ponds always stop? I don't see to have water, need residential. I don't know, Joe, I'm...
Yes, ma'am.
Could you please repeat his observations and his comments for people who may be hard of hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
And at the back of the room who cannot hear, who cannot understand a word he said?
Sure. So he lives on Citadel, and he was talking about one of the homeowners that has a lot near where there's a natural spring, is using it to grow apparently grass for his landscaping company or plants because the soil is wet. Maybe when this gentleman took over that lot, he took out some of the drainage that county had put in to improve that spring, and so we'll look into that. Behind his house, after a good rain, it puddles. He's got to pump it out, and if he doesn't, then it becomes mosquito haven. I saw his comments here. And then also, I guess, behind his lot is the Citadel retention pond that used to contain water but is now dry all the time. And I think that's what a lot of people say about the creek itself, is that the water flow from the creek is a lot less, and, but that when we get a good rain, it does fill up, and that also there's some sinking going on behind his house. Is that a good summary? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm next door neighbor. So this ring comes through the back of our pond, and between us and the next street, the back of their property. After the 14th of August, I had rain, water coming down its swamp. It's the back corner of my house from lawline and the bay area for two months. At that time, we had people from the county now at a treaty. All kinds of things was going to happen. There was going to be rain, drought, and then our county commissioner came out and nothing happened. And he's now there at his home, so he's not really... This is not the use for us. They fix something to do with the small, the tiny house and run into the neighbors. They come out every now and then, maybe quarterly, and we back again. The water is again pulling over the top of the culvert, comes through the back of the culvert, like a... So there's pretty basic on state, and you're not like, you're spending a lot of money on that.
So her comment is, what's occurring at her house with the spring and how she was affected in 2014, that we did come out and make some improvements there, but the water isn't going into it, like it's not operating as we should, that clearly the county was aware of the issue, but instead of making permanent fixes, we're only making minor fixes that alleviate it for a short problem, but still spending a significant amount of money for those incremental fixes as opposed to just trying to fix it as a whole. Do you have a question, or?
Because in 2014, of all that rain, we didn't, I talked with the engineers and everything before they started doing Olive Road. Because in, uh, twenty fourteen, all the, of all that rain, we didn't, I talked with the engineers and everything before they started doing Olive Road. That water used to come all the way down Ridgefield, Monticello, and hit that drainage ditch. But whenever, when that retention pond burst, that water that's coming down Ridgefield or Monticello, that go into that drain, it's too much. And what it does, it backs up. It backs all, all the way up past Monticello. So this time, we have, of, wa- watching the storm and everything, and round about from five thirty to round about seven or so, I watched the road. We didn't, the drainage ditch, the water from Ridgefield and Monticello was going, going through the drainage ditch. It have not entered into my yard. After a while or something, I noticed water coming in the house. I went to the back ditch, 'cause it's a no, it's a normal thing now for me. Whenever hurricane come, go to the ditch, see how full the ditch is. Because anything that's run down is in that area, goes down to tow win, street, and it gonna clog up. People chain lane fence, private fence, whatever, it gonna back up, it gonna back up from right, right there, any debris. That's the bottleneck there.
Yep.
So, uh, then the water was so high and the backyard was two foot. So the water from Ridgefield and Monticello couldn't go down to drainage ditch. So all it does is, is keep backing up. We left and went, tried to get to my son's house and come back down Johnson, and you could notice the water just coming out the retention pond. It pushed the car another, away from it. That much water, but everybody, well, we're gonna have, uh, generators to pump that water out. That to happen, that was too much water. You flowing, you flowing two more retention ponds into that pond. What can go? I thought one time in two, in two fourteen, that they were gonna put a drainage on the north side of Johnson. Let it, let it come down Johnson, go into the retention pond at, uh, Johnson. That didn't happen, that didn't happen. That water just completely come to that little, that drainage ditch behind us, which around about twenty-five feet wide, behind my house, and then it gonna go down to, it gonna go down to round about seven, seven and ten feet right there. And they gonna watch out everything. And the fence, the chain lane fence or, or before it, it's going with it. Then all the debris of that there, so what we can, what can we do with that?
So we, we do have, um, a pipe that goes from the Johnson, uh, one to our pit. And then you have the, the one that also comes and then joins here. And what you're talking about at Monticello and, and Ridgefield is right about where that, it, it, uh, 'cause right here at, at, uh, at Tone Bridge, at the end of it is where the, it narrows from the twenty-five. And also just, just west of that is where you have your, uh, probably about eighteen inch, two foot pipe that comes in off of Ridgefield.
Right.
And then further west of that, you have the one that, that comes in and, and joins, which is more like a, like a five to seven foot, similar to what you already have, uh, coming Pompeo and, um, and, and Gatewood. Um, and, and so I, I, you know, I, I see some of the comments are, what are we gonna do? And, and the comment is, I, I think we need to widen that area, um, from where, where, where it reduces. Um, it, it's widen that to help take that flow all the way to the, to the east and eventually in, into, into Scambia Bay. Um, the, there is some overflow out of the Olive Road one, that, but this doesn't necessarily flow into Olive Road. It, it's adjacent to it, and that's, um, right about here is where we had that washout. Um, and, uh, and again, you can see where it's, it's backed up. Um, and walking in the ditch, uh, at Tone Bridge where, right where it narrows, you can see where the waters, uh, damaged the dirt on the, on the edges of it. Of course, it took down the, the green fence along with some other fences. Um, and, and so I, as, as we said, we can, um, we can look at doing underground pipe through there, um, as well as, as expanding, um, the ditch itself to, to accommodate the flow.
Now, that pump, that pump must have failed. So that pump had to fail because that water come out so quick of that. So all the retention ponds are filling into it. So why we're gonna have it where it'd be a manual flow over into that, where it'd be a steady stream of water when it reaches a certain level.
So I, I think that's what we do have right now, is that when, when the water reaches a certain level, the, the pump kick, kicks on, uh, and starts flowing. Uh, we're also looking at, at trying to reduce that level of when it does pump, kick on. Um, but, uh, in talking with Wes earlier today, uh, if we reduce it too much more without changing it, uh, it would, it would burn up the pump. Uh, you wouldn't have the flow, flow in there. Uh, in, in terms of, uh, and somebody talked about the timeline, um, uh, I, I know some Quito Park neighbors, um, that, along Piedmont, that, that had the, the major flooding in twenty fourteen. Um, they parked their car on the street during Sally, uh, and probably about the timeline you were talking earlier, um, within a, literally a matter of minutes, the water is coming across the hood of, the hood of the car. Uh, what started out as a, as a slow, you know, and it was about that same timeframe, um, early morning, um, that, that maybe the one, uh, the airport just did a, dug a lot of it out, uh, overflowed in, into, um, in, into the Vickery Center, Roger Scott area, and then, and then down Piedmont. So, um, we, we do think that expanding that ditch is, is one of the steps forward, uh, to, to allowing the water that's already coming down in that twenty-foot ditch to, to keep its path. Um, and not hitting, hitting a barrier, um, that, that backs it up and causes it to overflow and, and, um, and back up.
But, but still, when you get to tow win, that's gonna be your bottleneck.
To?
When it gets to down, I think the street, tow win, that's gonna be your bottleneck, right there, when it goes over, up under there.
Where the, where the little bridges.
Bridge, yeah, uh-huh, so.
Um, and I think, I think we would have to address that as well.
Yeah, of course, anybody's property have any debris in it, and when that pond reach again, that's, that's it. It flooded, it's a backed up.
Yep.
So the water, to me, you need to eliminate some of the water that coming down that ditch and divert it some other way.
And, and that's what we are doing. We're, we are doing a, a study of the area, as you said, starting at the top, uh, looking what contributes to the retention ponds. Um, is there a way that, that we can, um, better link two of them? Uh, better link the, the pit at Ellison? And then also, uh, is there a better, something that we can do, uh, to better improve the outflow out of the Ellison pit? Um, and, and that would be great for you all, because, uh, for those along, um, along here, that would, Ridgefield, it wouldn't put the water in there. Um, and so, but like, but I, as I said, though, um, Baywalk Circle, they had, um, a few inches of water coming across. Um, that's where the, um, UWF property is, that old church property. Uh, they had a few inches of water sheet flowing across there. I, I mean, if you think of, of probably a property with grounds about the size of, of this, the whole back half, uh, being filled with water coming down there, there in front of their houses. Um, and, and so we, we have the, the consultant studying all of it, um, and, and come up with some recommendations on, um, if this is the best route, if, if this is the better route, uh, and then what we do with it once it gets to here. Um, we're already doing another FEMA project, um, in, in that area. Um, and so hopefully we can go ahead and tie the two together and, and, uh, A, move it along and, and hopefully save some money in, in doing it. Um, and, and so we're, we're looking at that right now with that project, 'cause we did sustain some damage, um, with the drainage in that, in that area.
Robert Mickelson, eighty-four, thirty-two Ridgefield Road. My wife, Pat, we are the second green dot on that map to the left there. Those two green, he's right next to me on Ri- Ridgefield, we should be red, not green. Two thousand fourteen, I have over a hundred thousand dollars worth of damage to our house. This time, it's another six-figure project. We've lived in an RV for forty days in our front yard. Can't get in the house because of the mill doing everything in there. Let's do something about this time. Also, I don't know if anybody's thought of this, try selling your house now. Try selling your darn house now. You can't, unless you come in and somebody lowballs you. You know, we're elderly, older, we'll probably stay there a while. We will now, 'cause we gonna be, get nothing for it. They said twenty fourteen that they had fixed this. We got all new furniture, all new appliances, all new carpet and everything. Completely gutted out. So please do something about this time, please.
Yes, sir.
Well, Wes, take some legal action, 'cause I can't sell my damn house.
It's flooded twice.
You really want me to use that? It helps with the, the Facebook.
I'm sorry, can't everybody hear me? As a result, I don't see any correction until that is alleviated. I was raised here. There used to be a flu that went down the back gate into scenic highway. It resolved that entire area. Pilots used to say if it got, if it started to rain, don't attempt to land at Ellison, 'cause you're gonna crash your airplane. Now, I don't know who the, the engineer was, I'd love to meet him, that decided our four-foot ditch could handle five or ten acres of drain pond. The rain can stop, the valve will open at Ellison Field, and for three or four days, that ditch is probably at, Steve, seventy percent capacity. Bleeding off that one area. This never happened, ever. And I say ever, it was built in the early seventies, and now we've done this twice. And it's not if, but when again. Thank you.
Thank you, no, I appreciate that. Um, when do we think we, those improve, or as I said, the, the change was made to Ellison? Um, 'cause I think we did have a, uh, was it the Corps that gave us a project? Was that part of the Corps project? Okay. Um, so I, I believe the Army Corps of Engineers, um, uh, gave us some money to do that project. Um, and, um, but, but again, that's, that's what we're looking at, is, is to, um, is there a better place for this water to go? Um, and? Uh, we'll use this one, it's a, so this is the, the Johnsonville, it's our Johnson retention.
Johnson Avenue. The ditch used to be just in our neighborhood. The ditch now starts, it, it used to be with Gateswood or Gatswood on Johnson Avenue. Do you want to go ahead?
Gate, Gatewood is, is the road that, that connects to Johnson. Uh, there is some underground piping that, that comes across some yards in the back, uh, crosses under Johnson. And then as it goes across Gatewood, there are two, uh, probably about two and a half, three-foot high culverts that are about six foot a, a wide, um, that start a twenty-foot, um, drainage ditch that as it, um, it zigzags a little bit here, uh, but as you get to where these green stars are, um, right at Tone Bridge Circle, the end of Tone Bridge Circle, it funnels down into a, a six-foot, seven-foot.
Our ditch is four feet.
Four feet, okay. Uh, there is a pipe that takes it from here to, there is, there are two pipes. Uh, you, you do have one that, that does take it up, up here as well.
It didn't work?
Uh, I would say it's not, it's not as big.
It's not working.
It was?
That's all I can do, does that help, Ray? That's all I can show you, does that help your question?
Yeah, right, I just wanted to understand.
Gatswood, if you remember Johnson Avenue, at Gatswood, if you look across to the, to the north and to the west, you'll see the ditch. It comes underground at Johnson, at Gateswood, feeds into our little ditch down the street. And you're, it's a funnel effect. You've got, what are we gonna call it, twelve feet?
I believe it's a, they, they call it, uh, lip to lip is about eighteen, twenty feet.
And you got eighteen feet dumping into the four-foot ditch. And you have Tone Bridge Bridge, and you have our bridge, which we used to say was private. But what the county has done, it's no longer private. And this happens every time we have a water situation. In twenty fourteen, Grover Robinson was on board. We were gonna do this with, uh, Olive Road and resolve all the problems. Wasn't Grover's problem, but nothing happened. It's this gentleman said. When are we gonna do something? What's your house worth? Does the county wanna buy it? Joe.
Mine's for sale.
Yeah.
Mine is too.
I got a question, or I got a statement. I got a statement. Mine's for sale. You can build a retention pond. I'm willing to do that.
Sure.
Because it's worth something. I mean, this is the second time we've done this. Unless you're in our fields, most of you don't understand. And I'm sorry, my friends are involved in this. But if you're stealing there and everything you own, you have to take it to the ground. You pay for it, we pay back for it. And I'm sorry, my children are. We lost our last step last month. We were promised that things would be taken care of. And look at where we're at now, we're all here again. Truthfully, a promise doesn't mean anything until something is actually done. And I'm sorry, let's face it, my children are. This is a situation for all of us. And I can't sell it if I got five inches, ten inches, two foot. We're classified a major disaster twice.
And what constitutes major disaster? We have, we would put more than our basic rules. If you're considered minor, I don't understand that.
Twelve, it's typically twelve inches. Um, ma'am, when I, when I move back in, uh, so they just said that they, they asked what was major and minor. Um, typically, uh, twelve inches, uh, inside is, is the, is the cutoff. Um, this is just Hurricane Sally. This was just something based on some comments that we received in our office that we created. So I wouldn't say this is necessarily, uh, maybe what Tim has done with his team in, in looking at damage. Um, but this was, was, uh, was just something we put together to, to start the conversation about where we were having the issue. Um, ma'am, when we moved back in, in twenty twelve, we rented a, a place that didn't tell us that it liked to flood. Um, and, um, so this was in twenty twelve. Um, we, uh, we were gone one weekend when we got a heavy rainfall. I came home to find a water line on the car, um, the garage was, was, was flooded. Uh, and then two, three weeks later, we had the, the flood of twenty twelve, the, the fourteen inches of rain. And I remember waking up and just going to open the garage door so that the water could go out. I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I, I, I understand what you're going through. Um, we, we've, uh, I've. And I, and I, and that's what I'm here to say, is, is that we have everyone here to, A, listen to, to what happened. Yes, sir, we will.
Yeah, well, well, most people out there have to think it's hard for them, as we knew of the problem. We didn't address it.
the problem, we did address the problem instead of it's not on our hands and here it's happened again. And we're still just talking about it.
And we're talking about what was done with Ellison Field, what was first to begin what had happened. Right now, we're asking the question, after Ellison Field got built in 2012, 2013, whatever. In 2014, we knew there was a problem, and it wasn't, now we're here again, six years later, we've banged down a problem. And we're talking about the way Ellison Field was built, what difference did that make?
For me, it makes a difference, she's asking why are we talking about Ellison? For me, it makes a difference in trying to figure out maybe what caused the problem. If for 40 years, we didn't have a problem, and then we did, what changed?
Well, I know if you're growing up in this area, that retention pond hasn't always been there, like the other gentlemen said over there, Mr. Brantley, but that ditch's been there since, I used to run those ditches as a kid. And now, since Ellison Field flowed and sold it to industrial use and built our retention pond, and since then, it's flooded twice. It's all man-made, there's a natural drainage to the bay, and all we've done is interfere with Mother Nature, been clogging that up, and the price of them, people are getting flooded. It's undo what we've done, mess it up.
And so that's part of this information gathering that we are doing, and asking you to report your damage to us, because that's what we then turn around and send to FEMA. So if it comes back and says that we need to buy the house, and, because we've done that in other subdivisions in the county, then that's what we would do. If it comes in and says we need to divert the flow of water out of the Ellison Industrial Area to find another way to do that, that may be the answer. And so I think we want to talk timelines, Rob, so let's talk a little bit about what we are doing and what's going on with the study right now, what's the timeline, we look at that, if there's anything we can be doing concurrently. I know from a public work standpoint, we've added a quarterly entry and to make sure that we walk the ditch and make sure that it's clean. And that's just, again, to make sure that we are on top of it and that it's, it is ready for anything that we get. So, Rob? Yes, ma'am.
I live on the end of Lyric Lane, the very end. Our house backs up against the Johnson Essex Apartments. And if you can imagine the water at the force, it moved our Volvo 11 feet and just floated away, and a fence post caught it, thank God. It was gone anyway. That water flowed through our house, up to my chest. I had to be carried out. I just had had back surgery and just couldn't walk it. And I couldn't stay, it was just climbing. I opened all the doors so it could run through. Directly behind my house, in the apartments, you had a washout of the road, complete washout. That's from our house, Brantley's house, Jean Garrett's house, the herd, you know, we're at the end of the road, guys, and FEMA gave us nothing. Not a, I mean, a pettance to what our house is worth, and said, "Go get SBA loans." Really? I have a house that, 22 years I've been in it, and I'm not gonna be able to sell it. 4,000 square feet, gunight pool, seven eights of an acre, I've been insured for $500,000. Do you think I'll get that? Your answer is Johnson Avenue. That water should not be coming from Johnson Avenue over across to whatever that break is. That break into the bridge that comes, not from Tonbridge, but from just above Lyric Lane, where that, they had that easement for a long time, it's now not available. But it's gotta, you just can't come in, it's water, right, and pettance come from FEMA and said, "Get a SBA loan." I have a house almost paid for.
Yes, sir. We were not able to get a FEMA representative here. We were trying to get SBA and FEMA. I think the important thing with that is to make that application though, because that does get the damage on record. Of course, after the storm, we had a lot of trouble trying to get that individual assistance here. And that's what we're saying, the first time, 2014, we had to go back in and replace it as it was. This time, being repetitive loss, we had an extra year, and now we're looking at mitigation and making improvements so that, I would say FEMA's, they put a lot into mitigation. They don't want to see the repetitive loss. And now that this is a repetitive loss, we have a better discussion going on. Yes, sir. And again, but part of that is mitigation. They want to spend money on mitigation so that they don't continue to have this repetitive loss. Yes, ma'am.
The estimate for the damage on my house is $100,000, and it's still, I still have an estimator coming out in a few days because I still do not have an estimator. FEMA offered me $160. So there is an appeals process, but you have to go through umpteen gazillion hooks if you think you're underinsured or you've been cheated by your insurance company. I think I have an excellent public adjuster who will get my house fixed, that has serious damage, windstorm damage, not like all of you with flood damage. I'm on McLean Avenue, which is parallel to Johnson, so we did not get the same horrible flooding that all of you got, but we got stupid trees that should never have been allowed to remain on property lines, swamp goaks that should have been cleared out when these developments were, when all these houses were built in the early 70s. And all these trees are 40 years old, they're rotten in the interior, they've fallen down. We had probably 20 trees on McLean and Juanita that just wiped us out. But be aware, the appeals process for FEMA is very cumbersome. I have an estimated $70,000 to $100,000 of damage on my house, but FEMA gave me $160. I just cashed the check today.
I wish I had a comment on that, I wish we had more control over FEMA. It's, but it's, I think, Madam Administrator, I think it's probably definitely something we can talk about with our four department emergency management and our FEMA, which unfortunately, we've gotten to know quite well. But again, yes, we all run into the crooked adjusters. We need to be vigilant when we have people come and do work at our house. Again, I remember Hurricane Ivan, my grandmother lost her west wall and the southern front of her house, and the adjuster told her it was a weekend fixer-upper. I was trying to figure out what weekend he was talking about. So, but we'll definitely pass along your comments to FEMA. And I know I've been working with them on trying to get out away from the three locations that they currently have and try to get representative out here. So we'll also work on getting FEMA closer to you all so that we can get some face-to-face meetings. Is the deadline the end of this month? December 1st, yep. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bender, my name is John Murphy, I live at 3935 East Johnson Avenue, if I can approach the board.
Yes, sir.
I've been a resident of this area for 50 years, and I've, again, like some of the other residents that played in these areas for awhile. My home is located right here, just, I'm one of the first houses that the pond hits. We flooded the carpet in the houses, and I'm down here just, you know, we're able to recover. And my heart goes out to the rest of y'all, I drove down through the neighborhood and everything else and talked with a few folks. But we obviously have a problem with, you know, with the volume and the amount that we have in the pond and the discharge capabilities of this waterway coming downstream here now. This is a natural creek bed in here, this is Skinner's Mill Creek that runs out to the bay, so it's already a natural basin in there, the water's gonna collect in it. We flooded the carpets in our house, all the way through the home, and I had 31 inches of water standing on the back of my yard at my shop, lost a lot of stuff in the back there, and forth a lot of, you still had to flip the whole house, regardless, you had to flip the entire house. And just like some of the issues that's been talked about, making sure that all the control strategy is right on these, this water discharge, to make sure that we have everything that we can do is to open this water flow up. It's got to be opened up so that we can empty this pond, even though it may act as an evaporative pond, and most times, it's gonna have to be a workhorse when we get it to work, it's likely to be able to move the water. Right now, I've got 500-foot privacy fence right there, and it's damming it. We got compartmentalized flooding going all the way down through the ditch. I'm wanting to pull my fence right now, and I'm only flooding my carpet, so if I pull that 500-foot of privacy fence, y'all are gonna see it. You're gonna see it with excess flow coming down through the ditch. And that's the only thing I can do to relieve myself, is to remove the fence. And allow the water to flow, because anything that's in the way of that natural path, it has got to come through here, like the commissioner had stated before, it's coming underground here until it ties in at Gatewood. And once it comes in behind me, in the wide ditch, it can't make this transition in the ditch, it's got a bad offset in the ditch here and everything else, it's got some restrictions. But then this home, this beside us, this home, isn't a direct path of that flood. So it's also privacy fence, it's gotta come. When it comes down, the water's coming, and it can't go uphill on Johnson from us. The water came up on Johnson to probably right here, at full flow. I've got this timestamp video of it before, during, and after. The water flow never came up past the front of my house on Johnson, but behind my house, I took a lot of water, a lot, a lot of water, and y'all did the rest of it.
This was an aerial map, I didn't know if you wondered. So I would just say on the map here and the map in the back, it's more of an aerial where you can see the houses, and the one in the back, I think the property lines are actually identified. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Before we get to our bridge, the little private road, there's a little wooden bridge. Every time it floods, all the fence panels, all the chain link fence, gets stopped right there at our bridge. And it makes it worse. This last time, the chain link fence was up above us, clogged up the ditch. Then the fence panels clogged up our ditch, our bridge. Down from us, past Jean's house, a tree went over the bridge. Well, Good Samaritans in the neighborhood came out there and started at the top, cleaned out the chain link fence, guess what, our house flooded again. The bridge, they cleaned it out. At our house flooded again. Until they got the tree at the end, then everything went out. Within an hour, our front yard was dried up. But the bridge, it's so narrow and everybody's fence panels and garbage cans and everything else, all the debris clogs everything up. The bridge is not wide enough or deep enough to support everything that comes down in a storm. It's just not.
So that's why I said there, we were already looking at removing some trees along the side, making it wider, but again, really removing some of those trees. I know that, you know, we'll have to work on the private road thing with the bridge. We were, I'd say the benefit of Hurricane Zeta and the ones that were coming after was that we were able to get in there and remove that debris with our contractors because we had run into the issues of getting back there and getting them, getting in to pick it up, so. But yes, and that's, like I said, that's one of the things we're looking at, that tree blocked the culvert, and of course, as it downstream blocks up, it backs up. Yes, sir. Is that not, not this one right here? Oh, okay. Yes, sir. We'll work with FDOT on that, and I know there was some flooding along here. Right, so I think that's actually maybe the oldest bridge in the area, or at least in the district, is that one bridge in North Point. And so that is an issue countywide with bridges, but that one definitely has my attention for this area. Yes, sir.
You said they came down and cleaned out the bridge, or the ditch. There at Lyric Lane, there are still, on the sides of it are fence panels, tree branches, another good rain that just tops it, it's gonna go right under Lyric Lane, clog up again. So it's, my only point is, is it's not-
Yeah, I know we have some damage just past Lyric Lane there where-
It's obvious the bridge is going to under the barriers.
Okay. I didn't make it all the way down there today walking. I drove across it and looked at it and, but we'll, we'll walk it again.
It's a fair amount of the bridge.
Okay. Well, I know down here where there was the washout, there's the, where you have the, the sewer line going across, the, the ditch itself sustained some, some significant damage right there where the road washed out. There's still an ECOA trash can and stuff, stuff like that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. The most encouraging thing I heard tonight was the fact that you're looking at that other side, the other runoff that's going out there and that we had declared a repeat situation here. I wanted to clarify or correct something. I walked the ditch, ditch also with pictures and videos. And the video around that pond shows that the pond crest had, it overflowed. I thought you said earlier that it not.
Down here at Olive?
No, at the pond. That one.
This one? Okay, yes, sir. I was referring to the, the one at Olive and Johnson.
All right.
Just came up just short of the, of the chain leak fence.
Okay.
But yes, I believe this one and this one both overflowed.
The, the 18-inch pipe you talk about going down into our little skinny ditch is not enough to handle the water out of that pond. And, and the pond is the problem. I'm glad you're looking at that and I, I would encourage that to be studied thoroughly. We have, when the pond was full after the hurricane, for about two weeks, Bill Griffin said a couple of, four days, two weeks, they let that pond drain into that ditch. It took that long to get rid of all that water to lower. And there was no way that it could done it, that it could have been done in time to catch up with the water coming down during the hurricane. There's one more. I think I lost the thought of.
And I'll, I'm happy to stay as long as, as you all need to, to, to discuss it if, if you want to think about it.
Okay, I just missed out.
No, that's okay. So, so let me have Rob talk a little bit about, about timeline. And then I'll, I'll go and say this. I, I think we probably need to go ahead and create a, a, a page on, on, on our projects that, that we can track the progress or give updates that, that they can all come to and just see what's, what's going on and, and, you know, it may not be updated every week. But as we either reach milestones or hear something, we can get it updated. And then a couple of things, it'll give you guys updates, but it, it'll keep it on the, on the front of mind and that, what we're, we're trying to accomplish and, and that way it won't get overlooked. So let's, let's talk about what our survey looks like, what our timeline looks like, and the next steps with, with that.
So if you want to talk about milestones, the, the next thing coming up is Notice of Award. Now, we are pursuing NRCS first. They have what you call the first right of refusal. So if NRCS doesn't consider us eligible to put money towards this, we have FEMA. There's another, there's going to be another route. But we want to pursue NRCS. They've already been out. They're very amenable to, to upgrades. And that's exactly what we're going to be going for. What's going to help mitigate these problems? We don't, we don't want to have this again if we can help it at all possible. So there's, there's three things I want to talk about. One being the timeline. So should NRCS decide to consider us eligible, we have to provide a cost estimate. First thing we're doing. We're taking these people around to see exactly what's happening. So we have a couple more places. They still need to visit some more areas. There are other areas that, that also need help, also need funding. So we're pursuing other areas. And when we look at this, we're going to look at not just this. There's other neighborhoods. There's other things in play here. So we're going to try to encompass as much as possible to help as much as possible. So with NRCS, next step again is going to be the, we have the engineer already online along with in-house staff. We're going to put together this estimate. That's going to go to NRCS. Typically, they want to go straight to design. So should we go that route, we would need the Notice of Award. And when the Notice of Award, that could be a couple of months. It just depends on how much funding is available, what they consider we are eligible for. So if we can get to that Notice of Award, that'll be the first milestone. Then 220 days, that's the big number that you want to kind of keep in mind, is 220 days to be done. So we would have to hustle. And we are pushing. Just please know, we are pushing to make sure that we get as much correction here as well as everywhere else. We are, we are, we are pressing to make sure these things happen as quickly as possible. FEMA, it sounds like a lot of you have dealt with FEMA, their timeline typically is a little bit longer. So we are pursuing NRCS. Again, they were, they were very happy to go with us to make sure that we can get as much as we can out of this to make it better for upgrades. So in short, that's, that's pretty close to timeline. Now, several of you want to talk about FMA. If none of you've heard of the Flood Mitigation Assistance, that's for multiple properties that have flooded multiple times, have multiple claims for flood insurance. I'll be glad to get with anybody here. I'll give you my information on the flooding questionnaires. There's a, there's an engineering email. You can email that. That will find its way to me. Best case scenario, I'll give you my card. Email me. I'll keep you all up to speed personally. So I can, I can at least do that, tell you where we are, what's coming next, how things are going. That, that, at the very, that's at the very least, I feel like I could, I could do for every one of you. But FMA is a, is a grant program. It's competitive, but there, this grant allows to raise houses, buy out properties, things like that. We have building, building inspection as part of our Scambia County Departments. They help with that type of grant. So we can steer you towards that type of grant if you have, if it's a multiple flooding property. So there is help out there for that. The other thing, I guess the last thing I want to talk about, and I'll give up the podium here, is I'm going to be looking for help from maybe not all of you, but some of you, the people that back up to along this ditch. There are going to be some fences. There's going to be some structures. There's some things when we go through there and clear trees, we're going to try to get as much room as we can. There is an easement through there. And if we can use every bit of that, trust me, that conveyance will help. It'll get through there. Yes, sir?
All right. What is the distance of the?
Everything that I've found says 30 feet.
Six feet, 18, 20 feet?
Everything that I've found specifically coming along Tunnel Bridge and the different units of the Ridgefield Plats, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the ones that I've found so far, all of them mention a 30-foot easement. A couple of the plats specifically say nothing can be built on that easement because it needs to be for drainage. Skinner's Mill Creek, that's drainage way.
Both sides.
Correct. That is what it says. Correct. So it'll be 15 feet either side of that baseline. So if we have an eight-foot ditch and we have people backed up to that within a couple of feet, we're, we haven't maximized that, that easement. So I'll be, I will be asking for help. So the, any help that you can provide, whether you can or can't, whether this, whether your guard backs up to this or not, I may not come to you. I may, I may ask for assistance. And I really, I really would appreciate any help that we could get in order to make this thing go as fast as possible and be as appropriate and, and functional as possible.
Regarding the grant, and, and again, they look in this repetitive loss and, and you're saying you're hundreds of thousands of dollars in your homes. It, it's a scoring system, right?
Correct.
It, it's competitive. And, and again, I think maybe the school board may be looking at it for one of their schools. But if the repetitive loss equals, I think it's about half of the value of the home.
I can't speak. There's a cost benefit analysis.
There is a cost benefit analysis. So if, if, if it, if the, if the, my understanding is that if the, the combined loss, losses is equal to half the home, then, then you stand a better chance of, of getting those, those grants. As you did say, it's competitive, you know, for, or, I don't know how many people took, took advantage of rebuild Northwest Florida, but we were one of the only programs in the state that was using those mitigation dollars to reinforce structures. But now we're looking at, at this grant that's nationwide that, that they're dealing with the people in Houston that have flooded repetitively, that you're, you're looking at those types, that's who we're competing against. We're not competing with the people on the west side of Escambia County. Actually, we're competing against them too. But it's not just localized. It is a national program and we're going up against all of those areas along the Gulf Coast that have, have flooded from the tremendous rainfall from hurricane events and flooding events that we've had in these last few years. So it's, it's not a promise that, that you're going to get these, these funds, but it is something that, that we can attempt to, to secure.
Is the repetitive loss with whoever has owned the property or just one? Your house across the street was, was owned by a couple. They had two flood beds. They were done, sold house. It's been a rental since. And the family that's living there now has just had loss. So at least three flood beds in that piece of property. So does that count for repetitive?
So the question was, does repetitive loss apply only to the, the current owner or is it, or is it stick with the property? My understanding is it sticks with the property.
Can provide proof.
If they can provide proof, again, if they've, and that's why we're just asking for information that, that we may have some from 2014, that we can add to whatever you have now. But, but that's similar to when you, when you buy a house, they look at what the losses are for the house over a five-year period and that, that somewhat sets your, your insurance rate because then they're going to know how likely you are to have a, a claim. So I'm sure there's some database that, that does collect that and it should be by, by address and not by who incurred the loss.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
What is, how are these kind of like, how are my house?
Sure. And we have a microphone if that one's, if you want to.
I didn't sufficiently have my rights. You're in America Corvista. And what my job is, is to try to help coordinate everybody to rebuild. Okay, so I just want to give you guys some dates because I heard some struggles about what day is the last day for FEMA. And both FEMA and SBA, you have to apply for those loans by December 1st. Okay? If you have been turned down by FEMA, don't think that you don't need to apply for SBA because you have to make the whole rounds. You have to apply for FEMA and get turned down. You have to apply for SBA and get turned down. And then you have to go back to FEMA and apply again. And that's where we come in. It's a long-term recovery convener. That's where you, you can get some help to maybe finally be able to put some finishing things into your house after you've used up everything that you could from FEMA and SBA, your insurance, because insurance had to come in first. So I just wanted to give you guys those dates. We have long-term recovery groups that are forming. The next long-term recovery group is also on December 1st and you can actually do that through Zoom also. And then we have other working groups if you're interested. We need people to help with, anybody that knows anything about case management, we're going to be doing that. We have construction groups and we also have a volunteer group and a spiritual and emotional group. These are all our working groups at this time. If anybody's interested in any of this or if you want more information, just come find me. Don't make it hard.
We don't agree with what FEMA called.
Yes.
There's a letter that others sent to FEMA about whether.
Yeah.
I had to go through the small business.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
And you have 60 days from the day of that letter to, to go back against it and say, I don't agree with that.
So, so I'm saying, small business adjustment right to my house, I'm not interested in taking that on law. So do they send those figures back to FEMA to try to find us kind of a million dollars?
No, they work separately from each other. And SBA, if you think about it, is probably the best, I don't work for either one of these companies, so don't shoot the messenger, okay? But it's probably one of the better ideas because right now their loans are at 1.18, okay? And even if you had to pay off your mortgage with that money to be able to rebuild, that's probably about the best deal that you're going to find.
Cindy, thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it. And I, I know Cindy was one of the ones that, that we were trying to get here for some resources. I know we do have some SBA information. If anybody needs to pick it up, ready to go. But unfortunately, it is a process and there are hoops you have to jump through as, as she was explaining, that you, you have to get declined and then go to SBA and then go back to FEMA. But we appreciate Brace being here and, and offering assistance. Thank you, Cindy. Rob, you have anything else? So again, we, we are here tonight to help gather some information. We do have some pushpins in the back if, if you want to indicate that on your, on, on the map. I've got the comment cards. If, if we also, if you want to, to make a brief description of, of your damage and your address, so we can make sure we capture that. We, we've got plenty of the comment cards in the back that, that we can use those for, for those as well. And, and we'll enter them into our, our, our system on, on the damage assessment that we have as a result of Hurricane Sally. Laura, are we still doing emails to that, the damage reports? Hurricanesally@myescambia.com is it? Okay. So one of the things that we created after, after Hurricane Sally and trying to get for the individual assistance from FEMA was, was an email address, Hurricanesally@myescambia.com. And if you wanted to, instead of using the comment cards, if you want to take pictures, if you have videos, if you want to write a longer description, have more time than what you may have here tonight, you can send those to that email address, Hurricanesally@myescambia.com. And, and we were using that as, as a way of pulling all the information together and, and the damage reports. And so we can do that as well. And anything specific that you think they need to put in there just so that we know it's, it's part of this?
I need your address.
Yep. So go ahead. So we need to make sure you have your, your address, your, your location address is, is the big thing. And then we'll be able to add it to the map and, and create it and create the, the assessment and, and show the damage that was created by this and why there's the need for those dollars to come in and, and help solve the problem.
Is there a?
That would probably be the best way because then we can accept those, those photos. And so the question was, is that the best way through that email address? It, it probably is because then it allows us to gather the most information. It allows us to gather pictures, videos that people have. And, and the videos of that water streaming across helps us as we're doing that assessment so we can see what was occurring, is that right, occurring when, when there was flooding. Yes, ma'am?
Do you want pictures of both? Do you want to change it?
I think that would be great. If you have pictures of both, again, that just, that enables us to make a better case for, for why we need their help. Okay. I really appreciate you all coming here, of course. Thank you to the church for, for hosting us. And, and I'll, I'll be around as, as long as anybody wants to discuss. I'm going to go to this gentleman first.
Also, if anybody has a phone call.
Okay. All right. So that's one person we didn't introduce is Jason Rogers. He's our, our new public safety director. And Jason, appreciate you, you coming here, here tonight. Real quick, I, they were at my, my last town hall that I had in this area, but the Ferry Pass Fire Station and the volunteers there, they do an amazing job. And, and they're one of the hardest working stations that we that we have in Escambia County. So, um, they do a great job, uh, for, for you all. Uh, so I want to recognize them and the work Public Safety does. Yes, sir?
I hope I speak for my, my, we appreciate you getting together with us tonight, you all, the staff. We're counting on you. We're looking forward to you, to the best you can do for us.
Yes, sir.
We're going to keep an eye on.
Yes, sir.
We're open.
Yes, sir. Uh, and I, with that being said, I do have business cards in the back. Um, Angela is, is back there. As I said, she's the one, um, who a lot of you have, have talked to, um, as I've been involved with the, uh, election the last four months, opening those, um, mail-in ballots that everyone did. But, uh, on the business cards is my cell phone number as well and, and you all are, are welcome to, to use that. Um, and we can, uh, also Angela's the best way to get in touch with our staff and, um, and so we'll be getting that, that project page up on our website so that we can start tracking our progress. Yes, sir?
Would you put me in the website address?
Uh, yes, sir. So it's, uh, the email address is Hurricanesally@myescambia.com. And that's where we're looking for those, um, any information on the damage or, or videos from, from the rain events. Uh, and that, cause I said events, uh, so that we can do 2014 or, or Hurricane Sally. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate staff, uh, coming out after a full day. So thank you so much.